This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call a meeting order. Approval of minutes for the working session on November seventeenth.
Motion to approve minutes in the working session and regular meeting for November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, and special meeting December eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any discussion? No.
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Presentations Apex Engineering, two thousand twenty-two Underground Utilities and Street Improvement Project. Bob? With them speakers, we're done.
Mr. Mayor, Council staff, um, here to talk about a couple of different things that are in your agenda this evening. First one being the two thousand twenty-two Underground Utility Street Improvement Project. Um, yeah, we've been at this a long time. I think back and I first had the Brooklyn City number year ago. The first thing we did is a capital improvement plan. We've got a facilities plan. We're to the point now where we've nailed down and guess what? City wants to move ahead with as far as Underground Utility Street improvements for next year. So, um, again, we're looking at doing a significant project next year. The areas are included on the map in the outline that I had provided, uh, last week. Hopefully, everybody's got a copy of that. Basically, what it comes down to is we're looking at reconstructing Schliemann Avenue from Munsterman Street to Beale Street, Rooney Avenue from Mile Street to Bartison Street, and then one block of Beale Street between Schliemann and Rooney. So, pretty significant project area. Overall estimated cost right now is about five point four million. Please realize that is subject to change. There's a lot of things going on right now. A lot of unknowns as far as where material labor costs are going to be a year from now, or I should say probably more like six months from now. So now that we've got the project scope finally finalized, uh, we've had a number of discussions on that. What I've done is I've included a task order agreement to prepare or provide design services for this project. So what's included in there is the study and report services. We've got design services, uh, all the way through bidding and negotiating. So I provided that as part of your outline. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to review that. If you look at the table on page two of that document, you can see that some of the services that we're going to be providing, propose to provide on a standard hourly basis. There's a lot of unknowns to some of those as far as how much time and effort it's going to take. So those types of services, the, the study and report. We've got some geotechnical services. We've got some special assessment services. We've also got some PFA funding related services. We propose to provide all those on a standard hourly rate basis. And then as far as the actual design goes, the nuts and bolts of putting the plans and specs together for this project, we propose to provide those on a We typically use a percentage of construction is what we use. So we have a standard table that we use for various size projects. We have percentages that correlate with the estimated construction costs and whatever the actual construction cost coming at, we use that table to come up with our fees. So does anybody have any questions on the, the document or that task order agreement document that I've provided for you to review?
You've done enough of these projects, though. I mean, you're pretty ballparked. I mean, it's not going to be a sticker shock down the road, correct?
We sure hope not, Dan. Um, like I said, right now, what we did is we put together our estimated costs based on what we saw for similar projects last year. We added a contingency factor on top of that.
I suppose with this COVID stuff, though, and with the, you know, not being able to get the supply and demand thing is going to really affect it, you think?
It could. It could. We just don't know what's going to happen. So I think we're safe, but with everything that's going on, I would say as far as estimating goes, right now is probably one of the most challenging times we've ever had. We've got suppliers already telling us that they're concerned about the availability and price of PVC pipe for next spring. So fuel costs, things like that, they all come into play, labor shortages. So we'll have to wait and see what happens here. We, we definitely think we're in the ballpark, but I'd just like to throw that disclaimer out there.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Now, the four plus million, is that for street improvements or what exactly?
Very, very good question. So when I, uh, mentioned the two thousand twenty-two Underground Utility and Street Improvements, what that would consist of in the areas that we previously mentioned or what is included on that map. It's basically taking sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer for underground utilities, removing it all and putting in brand new. And then also as far as surface improvements, it would include taking the street, curb and gutter, sidewalk. We may have to affect some retaining walls if they're on city right away as well. Taking those out and putting in brand new of all that surface infrastructure. So basically for underground utilities and surface, a total reconstruction of everything.
And where? Is this the whole city?
No.
Emma, do you have a copy of that you can give to him or not?
This area red here?
Just the areas in red. Yep.
And then four million now?
Four, five point four million.
Five point four million? Yep.
That doesn't include the streets?
That does include the street.
And it's all going to be done in the next year?
Uh, we're going to start the construction in two thousand twenty-two.
And when is it going to be completed?
In two thousand twenty-three or two thousand twenty-four. We're hoping right now, we think we can do it all in one year. So typically what happens is if we start construction in two thousand twenty-two, we like to get everything done except the final layer of petuminous pavement. We like to wait a year to put that on. So right now, we're thinking construction is going to likely end in two thousand twenty-three, possibly two thousand twenty-four. If there's some reason, we get feedback from contractors that, you know, given the amount of work out there and things like that, we think you'd get a lot better prices if you split this up into a two or three-year project. You may look at that. Right now, we're anticipating, starting in two thousand twenty-two, finishing it up in two thousand twenty-three. Yep. Good questions. Any other questions on anything?
These dollars impact, what does you mean that's increases cash flow or?
No.
This is just a minor part of?
Go ahead, Dan.
No, it's, it's not affecting our taxes at all for this fiscal year.
For next year?
Yep.
And just to get into the funding side a little bit as well, uh, the city is in line right now to receive funding from what's called the Public Facilities Authority for these improvements. They're a loan slash grant program. We're hoping that we can secure some grant for this, this project. If not, anything that does come out to be a loan is typically a twenty-year loan at one percent interest rate. So the interest rate is pretty good. Sometimes if you do qualify for grant, they do allow you to extend that loan out to a thirty-year term. But that's a decision that we'll have to make once we know more on, on the actual project costs and the, the funding package, uh, that we think we can get from the PFA. So, yep, good questions. So we've got a lot of our field work done. Uh, we've been blessed with very good weather here to get that done. One thing that's going to be done yet is sometime in January, there will be a drilling rig in town. Will be typically due for all of our projects that include surface and underground utility improvements. We have a geotechnical firm come in. They do borings. They actually prepare, prepare a report on how the subsurface conditions are going to affect our design and the construction of the work. But other than that, pretty much all of our field work is done to date. We're right now working on the actual putting together the plans and specifications, so.
Anything major you'd want to share at this now that you found and big surprises?
Nothing really. No. Um, a lot of times if we do find surprises, it's in the, the geotechnical work that's going to be done in January, I think in Appleton here, from what I can tell or and just looking at general maps, I think in the areas that we're working, hopefully the soils are fairly consistent. Hopefully, we don't find any high groundwater table. Actually, when we dug the, uh, dug for the water treatment facility, we found a little bit of groundwater there. Not much, but there was a little bit there. Hopefully, we don't run into too much groundwater because obviously if we have, the contractor has to de-water, that significantly can, significantly can impact the construction costs, so.
Well, hopefully they got that tile fixed out there on the other side of the Catholic church and then even over there by Dick Huckle's place. If all that tile's working, it really de-waters the east side of the Appleton there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Because the Catholic church and that tile wasn't working there. Across the road, we started getting some water there, and even Andrew Schmitz and all that's working, it's dropped, so.
Okay.
That's a big impactor there.
Any other questions or comments on the task order that I've provided or on that first project, that two thousand twenty-two Underground Utility and Street Improvement Project?
Everybody good? Just a one quick thing, Bob. How long do you think we've been talking about this street project as a whole? I've been talking about it. Just wanted to, for like four months, five, six months now, we've been talking about this, I think every meeting.
Yeah, as far as, as far as nailing the final project area down, easily, I would say six months. But as far as the overall planning for it, I would say that started back in two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, because the first thing we did for the city is an overall capital improvement plan. That actually included the water treatment plant on it. And then this was all kind of a spin-off off of that. So we've been talking about this a long time.
Well, and just so the public or other people listening, we picked these streets because they qualified for the one percent interest on the PFA because of what was doing all of it.
Yes.
And the other streets we have, we are going to hold off on them because we don't qualify for the cheaper money on those streets. So we had to handpick the ones we needed where we could get the best interest for our best dollars for our interests.
Very good point.
Yep.
Yeah, very good point.
And there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of underground work down on these streets very recently. As recent as last summer, I think there was at least three places on Dulstrum that got bought up for underground problems.
Yeah, as far as water main breaks, sanitary sewer collapsing, yeah.
So we're hoping we picked the, I mean, we're trying to pick the hotspot to fix that we're going to have the most trouble with, but we could have missed it too. I mean, you never know in a situation like this with our infrastructure as poor as it is, so.
Yep, we do the best we can. Uh, again, the crystal ball only goes till right now, so time will tell, but it's a start. It's a very good starting point. So if there's no other questions or comments on that, if I could, Mr. Mayor, move into my second item.
Yep.
What I wanted to do tonight is to just touch on the wastewater treatment facility. So at the last council meeting, there was a presentation given by your operator, Jim Brady, the condition of some of your equipment of your wastewater treatment facility. I'm sure a lot of you have heard that there's a significant amount of money that's to be coming out from the feds here in the next five or six years. So in general, uh, we went to a funding seminar here about a week ago. What we're being told at this time, that there's going to be about six hundred and eighty million dollars worth of infrastructure funds that are going to be coming through the PFA or Public Facilities Authority for construction starting in two thousand twenty-three and for the four years after that. So over a five-year period, we're looking at approximately, what we, what we're being told is six hundred and eighty million dollars worth of infrastructure funds that are going to be available for projects in the state of Minnesota. As we've done with every other project, the first thing that we typically need to do, to do to get in line for funding is complete a facilities plan if it's a wastewater project. We actually came down a year ago, we met with Jim, uh, at that time, you've heard some different staff members here at that time, we went with them as well. We went through the wastewater treatment facility. And we were going to submit a proposal to start a facilities plan. Well, at that time, the city was waiting for a permit, a new permit to operate that facility from the MPCA. And we were basically told it might be a good idea to wait until you get that permit till you start that process, because when we do a facilities plan, typically we're looking at twenty years out. And obviously, what you get in your next permit is going to affect your treatment process out there. So we were, we said, fine, that's fine, we'll wait. Well, at the last council meeting, I definitely picked up on some concern from Jim and Brady as far as the reliability and condition of some of that equipment out there. So I reached out to Willie after that and said, hey, Willie, here's where we're at. Obviously, there's some concern out there for some of that infrastructure. There's some money coming in from the feds in the next six years. The city still does not have your new permit from the MPCA. However, we think it'd be a good idea to get started on this process as far as getting the city in position when that money does come out, when you do get a permit from the MPCA to get in line for some funding, because it sounds to me, and based on our, our site visit, there's some things out there that need to be addressed.
Emma, that meeting we had with the MPCA on Monday, was that, I mean, it's moving forward with the permitting, right? From what I understood?
I wasn't part of that.
Okay.
But that had to do with some other, um...
Yeah, but it, we talked about the permitting in the meeting, so I mean, it's moving forward. We're closer, so I mean, I don't think it'll be a long ways off yet, so.
So here's what I know on that, Dan. I did get an email from Willie, I think it was yesterday, asking for some dates that could be set up to meet with us, the city, and the MPCA to talk about all this stuff.
Yep, correct.
The other key component of getting going on this process is getting information from your major wastewater producers in town, because again, like I said, when we like to do these, we like to do, do them looking out. So whatever we do, the city is going to be good for the next twenty years. Last thing we want to do is do a facilities plan, the city makes some improvements out there, and ten years down the road or five years down the road, a major industry says, oh, by the way, we're going to increase our capacity or wastewater flow twofold, and then the city has to do another project. So the thing that I basically mentioned to Willie that we need or would like to hopefully move ahead or get information on is again, a permit from the MPCA. Is there going to be any changes? And also, feedback from your major wastewater producers. What are their expectations or anticipations for changes in wastewater production in the next twenty years? But basically what I did is I provided a letter form agreement to start the process of completing a facilities plan, which basically phase one is typically documenting the condition of your existing infrastructure. What's the life cycle or lifespan that's left out there for various components and what needs to be replaced and how fast? And I provided just a simple letter form agreement to get started on that process. So at least then when we get this additional information from the MPCA, from your major wastewater producers in town, we can continue on with the process and hopefully again, get you in position if you want to move ahead with construction. You can, you can do so in a timely fashion once this money becomes available. So um, I'm just going to be very honest with you folks. Some of my concerns with this money coming out, I think it's a great thing. But I am concerned about the result is going to be increased cost, the inflation factor, because right now we're seeing labor shortages. We're sort of seeing supply chain issues with various materials, and all of a sudden, if you flood the market with all this money, I do envision construction costs going up substantially because of inflation as a result of it, so.
Well, that's right. I think the facilities plan will be good. I mean, if you go out there and you see three key things or, you know, one or two things that we have to get fixed, it's not going to, you know, stay in production or keep working. I mean, that's what we need to concentrate on.
Right. So again, I just provided a letter agreement. Uh, this is the exact same letter agreement that I provided for the other two facilities plans in nature, except this is geared more toward the wastewater treatment facility side of things. And it basically specifies that we're only going to be doing phase one under this, and once we know more, we're going to proceed on with doing the other phases that are necessary to complete a facilities plan. Completing a facilities plan for a wastewater treatment facility in Minnesota, specifically a mechanical plant, gets pretty in-depth. I will tell you that right now. So, but again, we want to think it's good to get started and again, get the city in position to access more of this money once it becomes available, so. Any other questions on anything?
Bob, you mentioned something about, uh, in that plan, you do something like you want us to think twenty years down the road. Is that what you said?
Right.
Okay. Uh, one of the variables that we obviously have is the prison. Right now, we have a set amount that we have to keep allotment that they get in our space at the Water Treatment Center. Okay, how do you handle that? We've gone for quite a few years now with very little activity out there. You want to do projections of what we can or can't do. How do you handle a facility like that where there's been almost zero for quite a few years and we hear nothing about what possibly could happen in the next five years out there? How do you handle, are we, are we allowed to take allotments back from them so that, I mean, we can't keep building a town around something that could happen south of town?
Yeah.
And that water treatment plant is a big deal to that place for population.
That is an excellent question. This exact same thing came up when we designed the water treatment plan, and I'll tell you how we handled that. Is what we did is in our preliminary engineering report, which is basically the same thing as a facilities plan, we put together, you know, documentation as far as, okay, when that, uh, prison was full, this is the amount of water that they were using. So we put together different design conditions with saying basically, okay, option number one is the city of Appleton without the prison. Zero use out there, because we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We gave a design, a capacity in a dollar amount. Then we looked at, okay, option number two is, what's the, what's the size of that building or facility have to be, assuming that you're going to have full capacity at the prison? And we gave a, basically a design capacity in a dollar amount. So what we wound up doing at your water treatment plant is we designed it around what the city is using right now as far as water in two thousand nineteen when we designed it. Plus, we anticipated some growth from your major, your major water users that you have in town that are using water right now. So it's designed to accommodate that. And also what it's designed to do is, let's say if the prison goes back online, the filters are designed, so we're going to be basically, it's designed to, to treat six hundred gallons per minute right now. If you want to bump that treatment level up to eight hundred gallons per minute, you can make some minor adjustments out there and you can do that. So basically what we did is we designed it to handle what your, your load is right now or what your demand is right now with the ability to increase, increase the capacity and accommodate the prison in the future if it does come back online. And we would do something similar for your wastewater treatment facility, I'm assuming. And we would run all that information by you folks, your staff, and make sure that we're all on the same board before we finalize any of these documents. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. So that's how we handle that. Again, those are the toughest probably situations to get into, because who knows what's going to happen out there? You don't want to over-design and spend a bunch of money to accommodate it. On the other hand, you almost have to plan for it some way, and that gets to be some, some hard decisions that need to be made at, at this level, to be honest with you. So, very good question. Any other questions? Okay, if not, then thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing, amending the city ordinances, Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter Seventy Traffic Regulations.
Make motion to enter into a public hearing for amending Title VII of the city code of ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I abstain.
Oh.
From the conversation.
So in your package, um, on the six of the total ordinances for that for Title VII is highlighting the proposed changes for the Safe Routes to School Program. This was at the last meeting, Principal Hightree from the elementary school had indicated that she is applying for some grants and that, um, the city needed to put this in their ordinances in order for the school to be eligible for some grant funding, the State Road to School. So, um, like I said, the yellow highlighted is the proposed changes to the ordinance.
So the only, the reason for the changes is to allow them to receive the grant money for signage and things like that, so it's not changing anything through the map, so. Anybody have any discussion on that? I think it's pretty much a standard procedure. Isn't it? Any community that gets this funding has to do it, so it's just a common, a common practice.
Looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
Definitely. Has any comments, correct?
Okay, motion to close the public hearing for amending that Title VII of the city code of ordinances.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any discussion?
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. It says in this here, it says at least ten years to provide nominal transportation to and from school preparation land, a route whose school is established. Do we have that? Is the route to school established, including demolition structures and the remediation, and he has this condition? I mean, is there a layout of this, how this is going to go? Or what are we really doing here?
To be honest, I was not told, I don't have the information for that.
Okay.
Um, the language here is the standard language that the state of Minnesota suggests that they include in their ordinance. I don't know what the route is. That would be a question, I believe. You might want to contact, uh, Chris Hightree. Because she's been working on that as far as we've had before. We've never had anything in our code designating that kind of route.
All I can say is she would have been here tonight except for they got a Christmas concert tonight, so.
They got transferred from last night to tonight because of issues at school.
Like with our others, different things of this manner. We've, we've designated a route. Say, for instance, with the storm wheels, there's a way you leave town, there's a way you come into town. Orwellers and golf carts, the same thing. I was just wondering, for the school thing, is there a designated route? This is the way we like to go, and this is the way we know some people's properties know will know that this is going to be affecting them. This is not going to affect them.
Well, that's, that's what will be decided once we can get the funding. Right now, they can't get the funding to get the signs or anything until we pass these regulate, you know, these statutes. I mean, all that can be discussed, I'm sure.
She'd asked me last week if I would, uh, help her with where the kids go because they drive bus and stuff, so, uh, but, you know, it's just to basically lay the groundwork with this one, and then we go out and we look at which routes should be used. And I, I don't think anybody is absolutely sure just how it's supposed to be set up.
Okay.
You know, but like they said, this is just for the funding so that we can...
I mean, I don't want to hold up the funding, don't get me wrong, but I mean, if that's in there, you got to make a difference.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, this is what the state of Minnesota says. We have to put in our ordinances to even qualify for the money. So if we don't have this in our ordinances, we don't qualify. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I abstain.
We have to wait four minutes to start the hearing on the levy, because by law, we cannot start at four o'clock. So. Mr. Mayor, I do have a question that has been given in the next public hearing.
So we'll address these and, uh, during the
During the public hearing.
Public hearing, correct. Time goes really slow when you wait for the clock, man. All right, do we have a motion for opening the public hearing on the final? All right, do we have a motion for opening the public hearing on the final 2022 Annual Budget and Tax Levy?
I so move. One second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Over the changes in the column here?
Yeah.
So the, the final budget and levy packet that you have in front of you is very similar to the proposals that we gave you back in September. The one major change that you will see on the historical levy on page three is that there were two of the bonds that Administrator Morales had spoken with our bonds council and gotten a legal opinion that they were able to be removed from the levy itself. So that did drop it significantly. So you'll notice that instead of the projected, I believe it was a 38% increase in the tax levy for 2022, it is now a 21% increase in the tax levy. And that is due to the 2014B and 2016B bonds being moved from the tax levy debt service to the non-tax levy debt service. And then the next page is the tax analysis, the tax rate analysis that was given to you at the November meeting. And it has been updated to include that figure for the 2022 final without those two bonds, showing that final levy of $1,369,283. And again, just for a reminder, that orange column is our taxable net tax capacity or total net tax capacity, which is based on what Appleton can be taxed on, which is described in that document that Administrator Morales has included. And that has not changed. So it is not projected to change at this time. And it also shows too, what the levy would be without those PFA money is on there that we are required to have on in order to continue receiving funding for our PFA project. Then under the budget, you will notice that some of the changes that were made were the salaries for the administration and finance, as well as the street department. All but one of the union and employee contracts have now been settled. So those figures did go down. What happened in the preliminary is we can estimate higher, and then we can drop down. We can't go up from our preliminary. And then also in this one, under the transfer to other funds, that's where that $20,000 for the concrete crushing that was discussed at the working session was put in. But the other departments were pared down per council's request for capital outlay type money. So those are the changes. So the final budget ended up going, being $2,160,672 on both the expenditure and revenue side. And then most every, the capital outlay has been the same or left the same. You'll notice the chart on page 46, which lists the levy debt service. That projection has now changed. Again, with the removal of the 2014B and 2016B revenue bond, or the bonds, as well as the PFA money, that can be moved, the PFA that is included on the levy is removed after 2024 to a non-tax levy debt service. So it doesn't show up on our, our levy debt service after 2024. So you'll see that change from our, our proposed to our final here. And then the changes are reflected in that non-tax levy graph as well.
But the reason for that dropping off in 2024 is our enterprise funds will be up high enough to cover the debt service.
Correct. Yep, yep. That is due to the council's rate analysis of both the water and now currently the sewer, analyzing those rates and working with the PFA to make sure that our rates are staying up to where 105% of the enterprise funds can cover our debt service. I've also updated the liquor fund enterprise sales analysis, as well as the water and sewer. And you'll notice the water and sewer, those are on page 71 and 72. The water fund and the sewer fund are in the black as of now. And last year, the sewer fund was in the negative around, at the end of the year. The water was in the black, but not as, as much as it is now. So the rates are trending in the right direction, and the enterprise funds are trending in the right direction. We're not taking from the general fund to cover the expenses for them.
Just so the general public understands what happened here is our water plant was shot, and they were actually going to shut us down if we didn't fix our water plant. But we weren't charging enough for our water in our sewer. So we were out of compliance with the state. So we couldn't qualify for funds to build a water plant because we didn't charge enough for our water. So we had Counselor Schmidt at the time, and Willie Morales contacted the state, went down and met with them, and let us negotiate a rate change that we would gradually raise our water rates so we could qualify for the grant money, and they allowed us to do that. They wanted us to take our water bill and actually, instead of what it is now, is just put it right up to where we needed to be. But they let us tear it up, and I think it's a three-year period, wasn't it? Two or three-year period to get up, because we have to charge 105% of what we cost us to create water, to even qualify for grant money. So to make that work, we, that's where we have to cover this $224,000 for two years until our monies offset that. So in reality, if we wouldn't have to do this PFA project, we would actually be less than we were last year for taxes. But beans, we have to cover this $224,000 for two years. It has to go up, but as soon as that 2024 comes, it'll drop back off. But we had no choice because the state of Minnesota said our water plant was shot, and we had to build the water plant.
And, and part of it too is we already had a covenant, an agreement with PFA that rates were supposed to be raised, and that was not followed. So they said, you know, it was...
Yep. They basically slapped our hands and worked with us to try to get us to the point where we qualified for the money. Otherwise, we could have been hanging here and paying this whole bill to the end. I mean, it'd have been $224,000 a year for, you know, I mean, we wouldn't have qualified, so...
I don't think any of us here are very happy about a 20, talking about a 21% increase. But, but we're talking about a levy next year right now at $1.369 million. In 2019, I just want to point out that our levy was $1.5 million. And in 2018, our levy was $1.483 million. So...
We're still less than we were when this whole project started, but we had this two-year glitch in here that we can't, there's no, there's nothing we can do. And we've cut, I mean, we've cut everything but that. I mean, there's nothing we added. We've cut everything we could cut. So I just, I don't know. I mean, what else we could cut besides cutting jobs, and we really can't afford to do any of that, so...
And it, it wasn't so much a cut to on the budget. It was, the council is now more well-informed of how the, the departments are functioning, how they're spending, and their, the analysis of how the departments have functioned over the last four years is now available. So this budget is more in line with a trend versus just numbers that being requested by someone. So the council was involved in, in a lot of this decision-making with each department as far as what do you need and what can we plan for in the future?
And we did convince all the departments that, I mean, we're fine right now. But I mean, you can ask for it in 2024 because a lot of stuff will drop off our, our bond rating too, right? I mean, we've got a lot of stuff dropping off in 2024. So we'll have some...
We've got one in 2023, I think.
Yeah. But I mean, things will open up where we can actually function. But right now, for two years, we're strapped. We actually can, we really can't do anything, so... I mean, was there anything on the, that we have in the budget that we added that could be cut? Yeah, I mean, we cut everything that we could add, right? Or is that, is that crushing still on there? That 20,000?
The, the concrete crushing and the part-time office person for the city office are the only, the two components in here that the council could discuss. With that, we, you could discuss it tonight, but I cannot calculate everything on the spot for you. So that would require a special meeting if that's something that the council would want to discuss further, cutting some more of those, those two things. So that would require a special meeting.
Yeah, but that concrete crushing is going to bring us money.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a sellable product. Once we get it done, and then we have room at the dump for more.
Correct. And council did make a move last meeting as well to increase the rates for disposal of concrete out at the brush site to help us in recouping some of those costs so we can pay for that concrete crushing to come in and...
Well, eventually that concrete crushing thing should be money made for the city. Once we get it up and running, we'll actually make money doing it. It's just to get to that, get to that point, so...
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Emma. Lori?
Hi, I'm Lori. Thank you for being on the council. I know it's a famous job. I don't want it. I have been in the city for years. So I kind of, you know, we've explained some of these things to do, how you can raise your channel or, you know, whatever. So, you can learn what you can't raise. But, um, I went to town, and, um, they said that their taxes were going up 30% or 40%. And I'm like, that's all? And they were shocked when I told them what my proposal was. Maybe no one, 10%. Um, I go to school, we need decent schools. I go to Florida, you know, I think that, I know we need to upgrade things in town, and I did that. But I just thought that was a bit extreme, with overall taxes, 110%.
Lori, did any of that have to do with your evaluation of your property?
Um, yep, the evaluation went up. And my property still isn't as high as it was when I bought it in 2007. It's still almost $20,000 less. And my taxes have gone up like fourfold.
Okay.
What about, what about last year? How much did it go up?
$48.
That's at the 38%, though, correct?
Um, it's more than 38%.
I don't know.
Last year, Appleton's alone. You want, what do you want, Appleton or the whole thing?
Oh, I, I guess I was just thinking about Appleton.
Appleton's was $677.92. Proposed, $1,626 in the court.
How's that even possible?
That doesn't seem in line with the other...
I mean, I understand, it's a little brush. I guess it's probably going to go up. And I mean, I just gather here to walk. I can't get it. We need things in town, and we're pulling on the channel. But I thought that was a bit extreme.
Well, we back to... So yours went up last year in Appleton?
I don't remember when, no, that's where it was, 67%.
Mine, oh, you don't.
I mean, they come, they go $173 this time. Appleton was $948, and this pool's $125.
And that 900 figure is based off of the proposal you must have got back in September?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's a massive, but...
There, you gotta go with that till you get this done. I can understand that.
34, that sounds bad. My phone didn't work when their job dropped.
I don't, I'd like to...
You're also done following it too, but...
Yeah, I mean, mine went up. I mean, mine was going to...
Can I see that a second? Would you mind just seeing that? Feels like a miscalculation.
I hope so. I hope so. I mean, I mean, but my house is still got almost $20,000 less than when I bought it, 2007. And my house is really, six or eight hundred bucks they had in total. So then it was $200 one, they won't have been...
Well, that's where we're sitting here in this position. We've cut everything we possibly could. So if you go by what we went down last year and what we went up, we've only went up 3% from where we were two years ago. You know what I'm saying? We dropped 18% last year, and we went up to 21 this year. So we only did 3%. And we got a new water plant. So I think it should be a...
Lori, give her just one second. I'm not, your taxable value for last year was $47,453. Now it went up to $82,660.
Right.
So that's a...
And that's still $20,000 less than what I paid for my house.
But I'm just saying, based on that increase, you're going to see a sizable increase from one year to the next.
I don't know that.
The whole, what people, what people need, what people need to do, I, I mean, I understand nobody wants it, but we...
I mean, that's why it's...
Our experience on the hospital board, we have a new gentleman in, what does he do, the assessor? And he's going through every property piece by piece, and everybody's taxes are going to go up because they haven't been looking at everybody, because we're getting taxed on Apple Ridge now, and we never were. So we've had Apple, how long has Apple Ridge been there?
And Apple Ridge probably needs a lot of work.
No, but I'm just saying, we never paid taxes on it, but this new gentleman found it, and everything is getting ramped up, and all of these digging into everybody's stuff. Yeah. But I mean, it's not on our...
Lori, you understand that? Do, do you understand that the county sets that home value? They're the ones who set the...
The assessor.
The assessor sets the value of your home?
So that's, that's due to the major increase in your taxes. It's the, the valuation of your home was increased significantly.
My home needs a lot of work. I don't know.
I, but I would, as a follow-up, Lori, I would contact the assessor and find out, because it says on there, your market tax per figure. And that's a big jump. I, I don't know what you did there. I'm not saying you did anything, but to go from 47 to 82, that's a big jump. And there's got to be an explanation by, why the assessor did that. That's beyond our control.
The city can only, what is it, 2% that we can negotiate? At least it was when I was on last time on the council. It's the county that has the biggest say about this. We have, I think we, we could... Am I right, Emma?
I'm not sure. I know in the meeting that the assessors come to where you can dispute your assessed value is in April, I believe, April or May.
Yeah.
Not, I mean, next year. That's where you can dispute your, your...
Yeah, like hers going from 40 to 80, that's where she would dispute that, is that, that, that...
But I would definitely contact the assessor now.
Yes, I wouldn't wait.
Yeah, I wouldn't wait. But like I say, the city, I'm, I'm pretty sure unless things have changed. Yeah, we, we, we can only, we can only negotiate 2%, I believe.
On the valuation part, yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, that's, that's it. The county has all its say and all the whatever. And what happens is if the property has went up in Appleton, sellable property, then of course, they're going to turn around. My house jumped too.
Well, they all, they sent it up to everybody.
Yeah. No, but yeah, that's not that. But that's, we gotta, you get to talk to the assessor on that. Yeah. But that'd be, the assessor would be on that, because like on our end, like I say, we haven't went up. I mean, we cut everything we possibly could here.
What you got in your hand, I know, is representative 38% increase if your valuation didn't change at all. And now we're talking tonight, we're going to get it down to...
Well, I don't know, because I have a car, my house is worth. I mean, my kitchen is original. I mean, it's old.
I would tell the assessor that. Get him in there.
I'd just have the assessor go and look at it.
I believe it's April or May. It is, when you need your property taxed, then I think next year in the spring, we'll have a, a meeting day. But we also do publish notices. There was a meeting day here December 8th, too. Well, that's long gone.
Where was that at, though? Do we usually have one here, though, that people, I mean, we actually set it up here?
This one's for the budget levy. That one is for assessment of, of the values of the...
But we didn't have one here December 8th, I mean...
No, that one was at the county.
Oh, okay.
And to give an answer to where to go.
Yeah.
I'm glad you gentlemen can discuss with a better understanding. Just to give you some background, I think 20, 28 years ago, or 23 years ago, I bought some townhouses on North Larsen. Maybe it's about them.
Yeah, then the people, we got people online that probably like to hear what you have to say.
I have. So 22, 23 years ago, I bought the property on North Larsen. It's, um... I am. So twenty two, twenty three years ago, I bought the property on North Lars and it's uh. Seven duplex. And uh, I pay my taxes every year, even though like this last year. The state wouldn't allow me to evict somebody that hasn't paid for fourteen fifteen months. So I got paid those patents that I'm not getting any revenue because the state says I can't. Then I look at the city of Atlanta where my taxes went up a hundred percent. They literally doubled. And I looked at it and yes, you're right, the assessor. Went from eighty one thousand to a hundred and sixteen. Well, I got them up for sale because I'm eating one. I wanna get out of the townhouse business. I got them up for sale for a hundred and twenty thousand duplex. So he died at a hundred and sixteen. So he thinks they're worth what I think they're worth. The comment is that you're usually twenty percent lower than that, which would be ninety six thousand. So I see my next step is I've gotta talk to the assessor because. On these properties of my taxes on two two of my duplexes, there are four thousand plus each. That's eight thousand dollars taxes on properties that he's assessed at two hundred and thirty two thousand. My home, then I think I've done well. I was a CPA for four years. To have a million dollars, my taxes are four grand. Eight thousand on something worth less than half. You can understand why I'm hearing that. It doesn't compute. And so you're right, it wasn't the work done by this council, which I I understand. And I think you've done a good job. It has to do with the assessor banging up. And they didn't realize that until this. So my next step is to go and see the assessor.
Okay.
Because. I can't sell them for that, even though I think they're worth it. The assessor thinks they're worth it. I think they're worth it, but I can't sell them for that. You just do what I was saying. If they were valued at eighty percent of that number. Then my taxes wouldn't have gone up. I wouldn't be complaining about it because a hundred percent is really. It only is eighty one percent because that's because the county wasn't as high as the city. So that's where I'm at. But I see now that it's not the effect of this this body and this these council members. You've done a good job and I I have no complaint. I really don't.
Well, we're trying because we all live and pay taxes here too, so.
You know, all of a sudden I need twelve thirteen thousand and I'm up to twenty five thousand. You know, that's a lot of money. But there's no remedial help for them. But I really appreciate listening to you gentlemen. Uh, you've done what I've done in the circumstances. And so I have no complaint involved. I have to have to see the assessor because the increases that he put up forward. Are just not realistic. If they were realistic, then I'd be I'd have sold it. I'd be gone. He wanted, I don't wanna do this anymore.
No, I understand your pain. Well, thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Got anything?
Yeah.
Go ahead. That I didn't do your job.
Somewhere. Here we go. Daniel, same boat as he is. So I don't have a a complaint right now. I mean, as far as what's going on, I do. But twenty years of one lot of property between here and Acapulco. With comparison properties between Swift County, Appleton, Madison, and Acapulco County. Whether you guys know it or not. I went back and looked at everything. Everything here is fifty percent to two thirds higher here. That's not on the city council. That's the assessor. We'll have to have that discussion. We will. But that's ridiculous. Because we share the same school. So the school's not the issue. He just said that you can't raise the prisoners' taxes legally and maybe you can expand on that because I know that that's a huge meeting. Of everybody's aggravation in town. If we worked with them ten eleven years ago. Because we wanna coddle them and have coffee and creamer and donuts and and have them bring them, bring it back back here, that's fine. But they're not looking out for us. They don't care about Appleton. Enough business owners here don't get a break. If we close our shop. I guarantee you that we're gonna get taxed on it again. I sold my last property in town because of the tax rate here. I didn't buy the building you were in because of the tax rate. I would have brought my business here. But because of the taxes here, you cannot justify the end result. If I just bought the fourplex from Swenson's. And I did the numbers on it. And the one thing that almost made me say absolutely not. Was because of the tax rate on that building. With those taxes, the numbers don't make sense. When I got, one month later, I get this tax increase, it's gonna cost me one month rent just to cover the increase. At twenty five percent, not forty like we're talking about, or or a hundred, hundred and ten. Twenty five percent tax increase. That increase is my increase is gonna be one month rent just to cover that increase. That don't make sense, guys. But I get it. I understand what you're saying. And you're saying it's what a two or three year process we're gonna do. But are the taxes gonna come down or are we gonna find somewhere else to put it?
Well, we can see our streets. We gotta put it somewhere, you know. Exactly, so.
And that's not all on you guys because there's new members here too. So instead of coming down on you guys, you know. Make us to promise that you're gonna make the change, make the difference.
Well, we gotta talk to the tax assessor. I mean, that's out of our hands on that. You know, I mean, that's what we're all gonna need to do.
But as far as fixing our infrastructure here in town, we gotta do something. I know that they got, and this is my two cents in it. But I know they want that part time position up here. Whatever. I don't know the ins and outs of it. I'm not gonna say we needed it or don't need it, but what I am gonna say after twenty years in law enforcement is this. We've got a lot of individuals that have moved to this town. And our officers aren't safe. And for them to be out here with one person, I know what it's like to be out in your little town, waiting for a deputy to come help you. That one time of year that you needed. So if we've got money right now with everything going on. I think we need to look at giving our boys a little backing right now. If we've got the money for it, guys. And I'm speaking from experience on it, there's nothing like being out here and getting surrounded by people that are pissed off or drunk. And I gotta wait twenty minutes because the deputy's on a call somewhere. I was in the same boat and I know what it's like. So, but right now.
We're gonna put it in somewhere. That's priority. Our boys got to see, or we're gonna lose them.
I guess I don't know what the stipulation is with the county. That that's run by the county too, so. They said the county sets the, yeah, but the county sets all the rates for that too. I would assume they will, won't they? Yeah, well, they're they're affected by ours. I mean, they've got a flat rate, right? But they fluctuate with our increases too.
I mean, city water is what I'm saying, right? So that's part of our waste treatment program that we're paying the citizens living on. So they should be paying their twenty one percent of their tax. Because they're still, we shouldn't have tax. There should be an increase in the stone, not if it's, what'd you say, two hundred and something?
Two hundred and twenty four thousand a year for two years for the water plant.
That's nine hundred thousand out there.
Yeah, well, I don't I don't know the legality of all that. I mean, that's somebody above my pay grade will have to dig into that. Well, they're paying taxes, I would assume. I mean, you still get a tax. Yeah, no, I'm sure if they they pay a rate taxes, it goes up twenty one percent. Theirs goes up twenty one percent too. No, don't work that way. Yeah, you gotta remember if they're paying nine hundred and some thousand in taxes, the county gets most of it. We only get a small part. But it's just the increase on the percentage the city gets, not the not the whole picture. You know what I mean? If if it's nine hundred and sixty thousand, the county takes seven hundred, we get two hundred to two for twenty percent only goes up on our share.
Absolutely. I get it.
I I I don't know. We'd have to look into that. I'm not sure what was made. That was before we were here.
Good point about Acapulco, Madison. I have, and I know I've shared it with the mayor, I've shared. Some of these things that you brought to light again about that county, about that town on their taxes and stuff. But one thing that we're still on the right side of is our utility bills are still much quite a bit less than Madison's. I just wanna point that out too. So it's just one thing positive for Appleton.
Yeah. It's a hundred dollars in sewer fee and it's the other fee before you pay a drop of electricity, drop of water. You're right on that. But again.
Well, and that's what we're trying to fight here as a city council and try to develop our community and get businesses to come here. But we're getting beat up on the county side a little bit too, you know, with the taxes. And I mean, it's a double edged deal. We're trying to help, but it's we're backed in the corner a lot of times too.
Right. I I understand that. I have explained that to you. I appreciate that. But on the flip side of that. As our representatives here, which you guys are. And I know we need to speak over the county too. And I have no problem. I just haven't been involved with Appleton for a long time. Now I am. My very first month, I'm getting. But we need you guys to recognize us. Don't buy solely because of.
Well, I mean, that's what we need to bring to our commissioners and everybody. I mean, it's gotta be voiced to everybody that's dealing with our stuff at every level.
Nothing to do with. You know, for twenty six years, it's all this way. I just happen to live across the lake. But I would much rather purchase a building here, or purchase property here, but it just doesn't make sense.
Oh, maybe we'll get that fixed on the road here. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the lobby? What are you guys thinking? The big boy wants to talk.
I guess I'm comfortable knowing that I think. Everything you can without cutting services in town. I feel that's where we're at right now and. And without putting over a moment of stress on the the office with all the new things that we have going on and maybe have coming up. I'm comfortable with the one point three six nine.
I make a motion to close a public hearing for reviewing the final twenty twenty two budget and tax levy.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Public comments, we didn't have any more, right? All right, move on to new business. Resolution twenty twenty one dash forty six. Finance, finance, final twenty twenty two budget and tax levy.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash forty six, adopting the twenty twenty two annual budget. In the amount of two million one hundred sixty thousand six hundred seventy two dollars. And the twenty twenty two tax levy in the amount of one million three hundred sixty nine thousand two hundred eighty three dollars. Second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any other discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty one dash forty seven, amending. Title seven traffic code, chapter seventy traffic regulations establishing section seventy point zero nine safe routes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash forty seven, amending title seven of the Appleton City Code. To establish safe routes within the section of seventy point oh nine.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye. I abstain.
Motion carries. Apex Task Order Contract.
I'll make a motion to accept the task order contract with Apex Engineering for the underground utilities. And the street improvement project in an amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty two thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars. I second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any other discussion?
Just a quick question with regards to that figure three hundred thirty two thousand. Is that included in the four point five million that you included? Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Apex Water Treatment Facilities Plan.
Motion to accept Apex Engineering proposal for the creation of a facilities plan. For the city of Appleton wastewater treatment facility in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand two hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any other discussion?
I just wanna point out that that plant now is thirty plus years old. I think it's been a good plant, but. It's probably never been perfect either, and there's some issues out there. And I think this plan is the first step. On prioritizing what's gotta be done first so we can get ready for the money that's coming ahead.
Yeah, it's needed. There's never been anything done with that that screen that cleans the grit out. That grit thing has never been fixed yet either, has it? You know, and I mean, people need to understand the problem with like not having that facility working with that part. Is that sand and gravel and everything that's coming in is not being taken out? So it's going through all of our pumps inside the plant. So that's what's taking our submersible pumps out because we don't have the grit thing working to take all the gravel and sand out of it before it goes into the plant. And then down the road, what they're doing there is they're having to dig all that sand and gravel, I would assume out of the. Out of the ditches or, you know, the clarifiers or wherever, then the gravel and sand ends up somewhere.
The gravel that should have been separated out as it comes in is ending up lying in the trenches of our plant.
Yeah, that was happening when, you know, when when I took over. I mean, it's been that way a long time, the way it looks, so it there's work needs to be done, so. And when we get our enterprise funds fixed, some of the stuff can be fixed on the way. And it's not like it has to be a tax burden. Because we finally have money put away to fix things as we go instead of having to always tax the the people in the community for it, so. Any other discussion?
One more thing, Dan. So what you're really saying, when we're funding these funds at a hundred and five percent, like a city should be. There'll be money in the pot to fix some of these things sometimes.
Correct.
Rather than it going on levy. That's what you're saying.
And that's when we got the money back from the hospital. That's where that fund was taken from. So that money that we received from the hospital went back into the sewer plant fund. So we have those monies to rebuild our plant. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Workers' compensation and employees' liability insurance.
Motion to accept the renewal of the city of Appleton's workers' compensation policy in the amount of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
My second then.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any discussion?
Do we bid that out? Or do we go after other bids besides that from the League of Minnesota Cities? Do we have to take that route? Okay. I'm just, cuz. That's a little high. Well, we have, and I maybe it's because it's municipal. I don't know. But compared to what we pay at commercial, that's a little high.
Well, it was too with that. George Floyd.
I understand.
Is when they took our our premiums up thirty-five percent for the police department.
Okay.
Because they, so much money was thrown out on that, that they raised the taxes on.
And you're right, they did. But so is that meaning we have to go this route under the League of Minnesota Cities? And that's, I'm assuming we can probably.
Probably bid it out. I would assume Willie would have done that. I mean, he's pretty good at finding cheaper things.
Maybe we can't. But I just kind of think, if that's where we have to go, then I understand why those variables are in play.
Maybe you could find that out and give Chad a call and let us know. I mean, if we can down the road.
That's fine. I think we're committed. This is our renewal for this year.
We'll have to pay that this year.
I'm not against that.
Yeah, it's April twenty twenty-two. And then you know, it's called four thousand dollars more than it was last year. Is the increase from last, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight. Tyler Leonard, here.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one forty-eight, requesting that Tyler D. Leonard be accepted as a member of the public employees, police, and players. Retirement amount per Minnesota statute three five three point six four.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion that the city of Appleton does not waive its statutory limitations per Minnesota statutes four six six dash oh four.
I second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any discussion?
That's one point five million dollars of liability for our city, is what we're talking about, waiving. I I like insurance. I think insurance is good for our city to be protected.
Well, not only that, but there there is that. They can only sue a city for so many dollars, and that's it. Whether it's ten people, let's say, all of us get hurt in the same accident at one time, there's a cap on what you can get, and that's it. Versus, you'd take a lawyer sitting out here and out in the public that be an ambulance chaser. Uh, you know, he could go after six, seven, eight, ten, twenty million dollars. But when you sue the city, that's it. That's that cap. And that's gotta be spread out amongst all the people that have got the point.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Pat Ivy demolition reimbursement.
Motion to approve Pat Ivy and the reimbursement for demolition costs to city demolition program reimbursement in the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any other discussion?
This might be the final one we talk about in a while. But I just wanna say thank you to all the people that did it personally and. Just took that initiative to get some of these properties taken care of. It's made a big improvement on our town. Driving right down the main drag, I see a big difference. And I just thank everybody that took part in it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-nine, assessing delinquent bills and repairs of properties at twenty-two twenty-four East Lehman.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-nine, assessing delinquent bills for repairs to property located at two twenty-four East Lehman Avenue in Appleton, Minnesota.
That was a. Water. Up in the intersection up there when they dug up that intersection, that was a service line. Yeah, that went back to the house. It was a. Galvanized line, I believe.
Believe so, yeah. The service line is what caused.
Is what caused the hole.
Do we have a second on this yet, or is that still the motion?
I will second that.
Second. Now we can discuss it. Yeah. Okay. Good deal.
It's technical here.
Well, okay, what did you guys, what happened?
Well, we're here to ride her, obviously, I had to catch you.
Are you familiar, block east of your place?
Yeah.
Where they dug up.
East of my place?
On the opposite side of the street.
Okay.
There, therefore, they had to dig up that intersection.
Yeah.
This summer. Well, what caused the problem was his water service line to his house. When they first opened it up, they thought it was a water main.
Uh-huh.
And but it was right down there. And I'm quite sure because I was up and I looked at every hole they were dug this summer to see what. You know, what was underneath all the ground and everything else. And I'm pretty sure it was a galvanized pipe.
Okay.
Which they law, you cannot close a hole up till that pipe is taken out and.
Okay.
Topper put in.
Has the homeowner made any dispute at the city office to you guys about this?
No, she, what happens in these cases is the business contract contacting them multiple times, never heard anything, so they get sent off. And then we just send them a letter, giving them so many days. To contact us in the office, and we give them a date when it's going to be assessed, and then there's some communication from the homeowner of us.
Fair enough. And at that point, does the city pay the contractor?
The city will will pay the contractor. But how we recruit that money is through the assessments.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty, establishing a money market savings account with the Prairie Sun Bank for current small cities commercial loan program.
Motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash fifty to establishing a money market savings account at Prairie Sun Bank for SCDP commercial loan transactions.
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Will there be any other discussion?
And add Emma and.
No, it's just a big policy that they either need a minutes or a resolution from the city council, naming account and naming the fine on the account. It's just big policy now. So every time if someone goes to a law that account, the council has to give a resolution.
Yeah, that pays for it in here someplace.
Seems like a good idea to separate this out, so it's easy, more easily audited and accounted for.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Sportsman's Club or Apple?
Motion to approve Appleton Sportsman's Club or Apple on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, pursuant to the Minnesota Gambling Control Board. As prescribed by Minnesota statutes three forty-nine point one six six.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will there be any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries Chapel Central Police Department Heating Unit.
The police department unit is the oldest unit in the basement. So right now, they're running on auxiliary heat. But come summer, there wouldn't be any air conditioning. And the the problem with the auxiliary heat is it's not consistent. And when you turn that, it kind of affects the rest of the building. So this would be to replace the unit to the PD. The last one that we did, we thought was actually the PD unit, was one that includes the RDC. So it, everything Chapel was here, this was following because when they flushed the entire system, it's on this unit is not operational and not repairable in any form, basically.
And I brought it to, I mean, we need to contact Otter Tail cuz I believe there's a rebate right now on these heat pumps at a thousand or twelve hundred dollars. I think twelve hundred for commercial, a thousand for residential. Um, so Emma will check into that next week. That'll be a great help.
Motion to approve the purchase of a heating unit for the Appleton Police Department in the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Will there be any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Purchase beyond city's purchase policy.
Motion to approve purchases exceeding the cities of Appleton's purchase policy limits of the amount of. Hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight point zero seven.
Have a second? Perfect. Okay, just so the people in the public, if they don't are listening, it's Magni Construction, which would be for the water treatment facility, Apex Engineering. And MSR, who is that?
MSR is the library design.
Library design?
That's part of the contract. It's another step up. But maybe in Apex.
Will come out of the.
Will come up, the PFA will reimburse.
Yep, so it'll reimburse us. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Transaction summary.
You've been providing the transaction summary. Do you have any questions?
I just had the one. Up on the top, I think revenue, you transferred money from savings or up into savings. And then the other one, you transferred like a little over a million out of savings. Can you explain? Why you do what you did?
When I transferred two savings, what we got, three of them, I believe from the county for taxes.
Uh-huh.
And then a million. Was because of all the payments and bills and stuff that we paid. And then to cover that.
I was curious, why would you even transfer anything? I would leave it all in the check. Just curious, do you have, you have to do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is a couple weeks before I needed that money and put it in the savings.
Okay, all right.
I think that will probably. Oh, yeah. One payment came up, and then I think, great, he had a couple very large things.
Okay.
Any other questions for us? Thank you. Thank you. All business. Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion be adjourned. Second.
Motion's are made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'd like to thank Tim Rittenhour for his time served filling in when he was here. And welcome, Dan Ink is a new council member. So, thank you, everybody.